November 12th Planning Board Meeting. As usual, we'll start with our meeting minutes. From the October 8th meeting, we paid a few bills as usual. We reviewed and acted on four resolutions. One for Three Borough Hall Lane LLC and Five Borough Hall Lane LLC. Lot line adjustment, which was approved 4-0. Soros Wetlands application at One Seagull Road was likewise approved. Westneck Creek cottages LLC minus subdivision sketch plan was approved. And the white maintenance bond increased. That's all we had. Anyone see anything of interest or corrections? So I make a motion to accept the October 8th Planning Board Meeting.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a few bills. First, from the Shell Round Order for posting notices for upcoming public hearings. The first was for DeFauln at $64 and the second for Chiquita Avenue 5107, totaling $115.07. This is a requirement, so I make a motion to accept the Shelter Island Order invoice for $115.07.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a group invoice from the Reina Group for professional services for last month, October. I spent some time on the DeFauln Share Lot Line Modification Application Memo. Ended a planning board meeting and reviewed the various resolutions I just described and reviewing the Fowler Trust major subdivision that has come in. It's five hours, $825, so very helpful for us. So I make a motion to accept the Reina Group's October invoice for professional services amount $825.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have two resolutions to act on. First, Karen Hoag wrote regarding the S H Westneck Lot Line Adjustment. I have an email from her this morning that they plan to meet with the Health Department on Thursday to have the Health Department sign the maps. So they will be done as of this upcoming period. The new resolution, which is number 35 of 2024, extends their deadline until December 9th, 2024. This is the fifth or sixth, so I don't need to go into details, I think. It's so close, this is worthy, let's just do it. So I make a motion to accept number 35 of 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For the second resolution, for Chiquita Avenue LLC, I must recuse myself being the applicant's architect.
All right, so we've agreed to become lead agency for this. And it makes sense because the new law came into effect June 19th. So all applications after that, the town board would do. And all applications before that, the planning board would do. And the Chiquita came in in like the spring of 2023. David and I did the walkthrough May 31st. So on that basis.
And isn't there an initial basis of that being sent to us directly by the judge?
Yeah, so just as a reminder that
Right, and then there's the judge.
There was a question about the town board being lead agency on this application. However, as was confirmed by the court, the town board is not an involved agency for this application and therefore could not be the lead agency on this application. However, we did receive a request from the town attorney late this afternoon requesting the town board be added as a interested agency, which we added to the application. You can see that on the, not to the application, to the resolution, adding the town board as an interested agency. However, interested agencies are not involved agencies and therefore cannot be lead agency. And so since there were no other involved agencies that commented, the board can assume their lead agency position. So if everybody's reviewed the resolution, you have any questions?
That came from Kylie and that was, they just asked that they be added.
Correct.
And I'm fine with that.
It's interested, not as involved.
And then as the board knows, after lead agency designation, we have a public hearing scheduled for next week or next month. And the board public will be able to speak with regard to the application. I believe there is a planning memo from a planning consultant that reviews the application. And so then the board will be able to continue on. And then the next secret step would be once the board feels that it has all the information it needs to make a decision, it would make its designation, secret designation declaration, which you, that's when you make it, whether it's a M G D, make actual conditions or deposit a declaration. So once the board feels that it has all that information, it can make its declaration. So the next step here would be a public hearing at the December meeting.
Perfect.
And then, you know, whether or not it closes that night or it's extended because it needs more information, that'll be something that you would determine at that point.
Thank you. Maggie, something?
No. I don't think it's Fernando?
You're not allowing any comment at all, is that?
Next month.
The public hearing is next month.
Yep.
This has to do with lead agencies.
Yeah, that's not, that's legal issues.
We reviewed your letters with regard to the lead agency. So they have been submitted to the record.
They are on record.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll make a motion to become the lead agency in Chiquita Avenue. All in favor? Give a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Heard the eyes and blocking.
Are there any names or is this?
No.
Okay. Just wanted the full vote recorded, that's all.
Okay, so next we have a public hearing for DeFauln and the DeFauln Share Lot Line Adjustment. Read the public notice. Notice hereby given, the following hearing will be held by the Shelter Island Planning Board on the 12th day of November 2024, in person at the Shelter Island Town Hall, 38 North Ferry Road, Shelter Island, New York. Applications are scheduled to begin at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter. One, a public hearing regarding the application of Christine and Catherine DeFauln and Alex and Philip Share for a lot line modification of lands purportedly owned by them. Lots are located in the A Residence District and near shore Overlake District, both with frontage along West Neck Harbor, which parcels are identified on the Suffolk County tax map as 722-1150, which is the DeFauln lot, and 722-1149, which is the Share lot. The application proposes to transfer 930 square feet of land from the Share lot to the DeFauln lot. As a result, the lot area of the Share lot will decrease from approximately 37,318 square feet to 36,388 square feet. And the lot area for the DeFauln lot will increase from approximately 13,585 square feet, 14,515 square feet. Secret Class Type 2. Subject applications are available for review at the Office of the Shelter Island Planning Board and on the planning board's website. All persons wishing to be heard should appear at the aforementioned time and place. Okay. The applicant here or someone?
Ian, yeah, Matt Sherman with Sherman Engineering and Consulting. I'm here representing Kathleen DeFauln and Alex Share, the property owners of these two properties. Mr. DeFauln is on Zoom as well. This is just a very simple adjustment of a lot line to move it away from the house on 11 East Brander, just to move it, kick it out away from the house a little bit, give them a little bit of extra room. The Shareers had at one time owned both properties. Then, prior to selling 11 East Brander, they had looked at doing this lot line change. So this application is basically just continuing those efforts that they had started prior to Mr. DeFauln's ownership of 11. It's, as I think you had noted in your notice, it's a 930 square foot difference going from 13 East Brander to 11 East Brander. Both sites are pre-existing non-conforming to zoning code. So this doesn't really impact anything with respect to that. And if anything, it does decrease the non-conformity on 11 by a few feet, not enough to brag about, but it does give them a little bit of extra room to the house.
Anyone on the board have any questions for Matt? Does anyone in the audience have any comments about this application? Does anyone on Zoom have a question about this application? With no comments, Matt, thank you. I make a motion to propose the Share DeFauln application.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Easy one.
That's the end of our business meeting. Now on to the work session. Current applications, we have the Bloom Minor Subdivision. Final submission deadline is January 14th. I know they're working on their sanitary system certification. It's been installed for the existing house. They're still trying to figure out their well situation, so it's going to be a while. And I expect that they'll be requesting an extension in January. S H 29 Wetland, West Neck LLC Lot Line Adjustment. We just extended that till December 9th, 2024, but I don't think they'll need it. That should be closing out soon. The Elliot Bowesman Lot Line Adjustment. We're waiting on final maps and they had to today. And we did get a letter from Matt Sherman requesting an extension. So we will pass that resolution next month. And Matt's indicated to me he's just having problems with the Health Department or having taken, it's taken them time to approve this. R and B Shelter Island, which is the Radigan Lot Line Adjustment. We're waiting on deeds for review. They have till next month, December 10th. So either they will have something for us, but I expect they'll be asking for an extension. Westneck Creek cottages LLC, the submission of the final application, they have until April 8th. Five, Three and Five Borough Hall Lane Lot Line Adjustment. We're waiting on the, we've done the deeds.
Yeah, I signed off on them.
So we're waiting on the recording of the deed. And then after that will be Platts and then recording of the Platts. They have till April 8th currently. The DeFauln Share Lot Line Adjustment, we just closed that hearing. Yeah. I think it's very straightforward. I don't think there's any special conditions that are needed.
Doesn't seem like
It benefits the very small lot. It doesn't diminish the bigger one that much. So Beth, can we ask you to prepare a resolution for that for next month? The white performance and maintenance bonds. We're waiting on proof of bond, of the bonds. But there's been, I guess, a question about whether the maintenance bond is really needed because the road is in. Stephen Kylie seems to think it is required. And Karen Hoag is thinking it's not. And so we're stuck in the middle again, trying to figure this one out. Do you want to describe it in legal terms for us?
There's a, well, there's, she's, Karen was making the argument that there's, in the provision of the code, which there's a section of the code with regard to maintenance bonds that talks about the situation where in a subdivision, the town is ultimately going to be the owner of the road. And so they require a maintenance bond from the point where it's, the road's been constructed and to take you to the point where the town is going to take the road into the highway system. Here, because the road is not meant to be put into the highway system, Karen was arguing based on the code that it's, there is no maintenance bond that should be collected because it's Stephen, the town attorney, has treated it a different way. So they need to work that out amongst themselves.
But the way Stephen Kylie's been looking at it is they have the opportunity to give the town the road and then the
Town needs to decline.
The town maybe accept because it leads to their parkland. And then it's the town's responsibility to maintain it. But if, if they're not giving it to the town, then this maintenance bond has to be carried for the maintenance of that road because it is currently being used by other than the owners of the back properties. So it needs to be maintained or accessed. They can't let it go to ruin. And then that board doesn't, you know, doesn't permit the public to access the parking area for the hiking trails. So that's kind of the impression I'm getting. And I just like to see these maintenance, at least the one bond that they need to put in, we don't have that. And, you know, then figure out a way of resolving this, this other bond. But ultimately, isn't it, we've done, we've passed our resolutions and then all this conversation being happening at this point with the town board, who should be collecting it, to make, making sure that they receive it? So I think
I think it's based off a formula to figure out what the cost of the maintenance bond is, is based off a formula.
I don't know enough. In the past, we just, you know, agreed with it and presents to the town board and the town board approved it. So I think, I think we need to present this with the town board to take over.
Yeah, it seems like it should be off our agenda and onto theirs.
Well, it's just, I'd like to follow it through because I do think the one bond hasn't been in effect for quite some time and it needs to be in effect. So I will write amber letter.
Maintenance bonds, that's part of our, in the formal process of going through, is that like on one of our last steps? Is that the idea or was it something we maintained throughout?
We have to every two year revisit it, get Joe to write a, you know, the market seems to reanalyze. It's really only valid for two years and then it has to be reanalyzed.
That's right.
And the way the whites are using this is they just don't want to build the road. And so they don't, and they don't plan to build on any of the properties or expand any of the properties. So they don't care if we don't track it.
Right, understood.
So just, so maintenance bond is, it's 111-24 is the code section. And it says, let's see. The relevant one. The time of the release of the performance bond, a maintenance bond shall be furnished by the developer to guarantee upkeep and the workmanship and materials of all required improvements for a period of one year from the date of release of the performance bond by the town. This bond shall be in the amount which is one-third of the performance bond estimate. If the improvements are not taken over by the town, an annual maintenance bond shall be required annually updated and running until the improvements are dedicated to the town. The amount of this bond shall be fixed by the Superintendent of Highways and approved by the town board. If the improvements are not accepted for dedication by the town, no maintenance bond shall be required.
But it hasn't been offered to the town.
Right, well
So the town can't accept something that hasn't been offered to them.
Well, but I don't, as part of the subdivision, the road was never meant to be put into the town highway. I don't, it wasn't discussed.
We were asked to pass the resolution. We passed the resolution, we made it formal. We presented to the town, we did what we were asked to do. And, you know, someone that can work on this.
I think if the road that's been constructed to this point was offered for dedication, the highway department wouldn't accept it because it's not built to town specs or subdivision roads. It's never meant to be built. It's, you know, it's not as wide as it's supposed to be.
But it wasn't offered, that's the whole point. And who's going to maintain it over the next few years? The family, they have to put up money for that. And if it gets really foul potholed and it's served, they don't want people using the parking lot and walking on the property, so. Well, I'll write amber about it. Last thing, is a new major subdivision that we've received for the Fowler Trust. And this is on 50, at 59 Nostrum Parkway. Many people know the property if you drive past Antwood Pat, hit that really hard left-hand turn and it's the property on your right-hand side. Like extends over a mile or so. Joe put together a very long detailed memo. I read through it, thought it was very helpful. I think all of you, maybe I'm the only one who's been through a major subdivision before.
That's true.
And so I think this is helpful. And Joe, do you want to go through your memo? Or it seems to be there's the applicants here. Should I allow the applicant to talk first or?
What have you?
Why don't you go through your memo and then the applicant?
This is a five-lot subdivision of a 16, a parcel that's over 16 acres in size. Lots ranging in size from 117,239 square feet to 186,384 square feet. The zoning here is double A, so minimum lot size is 80,000. So all of these lots exceed minimum lot size for the zone. The parcel is wooded for the most part. There is an existing residence on the property. And the residence is located on what would be proposed Lot 4, but portions of the driveway, utilities, the well are located on Lot 3. So they'll have to be relocated onto Lot 4. There are some sheds that are located on proposed Lot 3, those to be removed. And the other lots are vacant. On Lot 5, which is at the south end of the property, there are some encroachments from neighbors, adjacent neighbors that'll have to be cleaned up. Parcel has 1,418 square feet. It's not square feet, linear feet of frontage on Conic Bay. There are wetlands that have been identified by N Consultants on June 2nd, 2022. The map does provide the 75-foot setback and the 100, I'm sorry, the 25-foot. What? But there's also a bluff along the frontage of the property on Conic Bay. And according to code, there's a 100-foot setback for structures from the top of the bluff. So that actually pushes the building envelope way from the water than the wetland setbacks would. And the map does show building envelopes. Those map, those building envelopes will have to be adjusted at the next step, which would be the preliminary subdivision step. Okay, there are topographic contours, the two-foot intervals have been provided. Basically, property is highest in the south end. It's close to 60 feet in elevation spots. And as it goes north, it slopes down and around 20 feet in elevation when you get to Lot 1. The applicants are proposing to meet the park requirement by a series of open space easements that will be located on the lots that are along Nostrum Parkway. The easements are about, they scale a little bit more than 50 feet, 53 feet. And the total of the easements falls just short of the 10% that's required. They're only, you know, 32 feet, square feet short.
So they should be able to adjust that easily.
It shouldn't be, and if you go across 1,400 feet, 32 feet, you're talking about inches. But the question is, is, you know, this is similar to what was done on Westneck Creek cottages, where the board approved easements service the park area. But that's a decision that the board has to make, whether or not having easements like this are adequate.
They were in here talking to us before about this, when they were considering a three-lot subdivision.
And they had mentioned using, you know, creating a buffer along the road. And, you know, the, creating a 50-foot buffer on a parcel that's wooded like this is, would help screen development from the road.
What about the access portions? Wouldn't that be, would that be excluded from?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, they provide four 20-foot wide four 20-foot Four 20-foot wide access points. One for, one is for lots one and two, and then they have one for, four and five. One question that the board might want to consider is, do we want just one single access point to serve two lots? So there's just one driveway that comes in for the first 50 feet? And then it would branch off in each lot? Or have two that are right next to each other?
It seems to me they have actually proposed similar, so it's 20 feet on both lots.
Yes.
But we could just say in our, our resolution points, conditions, that we, it has to be a shared access in that.
Just for that 50 feet?
I think that would be, instead of having driveway, single double driveway, that would be more acceptable.
And it also limits the clearing that's required for a driveway.
Correct.
So within that 40 feet, you won't have two driveways that are cut into that. And they did provide for the, the existing driveway that serves the house that's on lot four, the easement, for open space easements that are on that lot, go around and include that existing driveway. So even though the driveway will be relocated, as long as the house is going to remain, the driveway is going to be relocated to, between lots four and five, then the driveway for lot three should continue to use or will continue to use that existing access point. As a result, there'll just be three new driveways along this stretch of road.
I think that's better, yeah.
Two, two blocks of that exist. Yes. See the map, it shows an access on lot four. It goes, it's an existing access that goes down to the beach. If and when a, an app, a wetland application comes in, perhaps that can be used as the 100-foot exemption. But at least we know it's there and seeing at aerials, it's been there for a while. The subdivision map doesn't show the location of the existing sanitary system of the house. There, there are some leaching pools that are labeled.
Water.
Yeah, closer to the water. There's also a dry well, it looks like. But we don't know where the sanitary system is. That should be shown on the preliminary plat. The health department will definitely require to know where that, where that is. And they'll, they'll also want to know what that system consists of. If it doesn't conform with current health department standards, typically what they'll do is require that it gets upgraded. But that's something after preliminary, before final. This one was a. The building envelopes that are shown go all the way up and, and end at the open space easements that are on the property. There should probably be some type of buffer. It, it could be as little as 10 feet because if somebody builds, you know, up to the end of the building envelope, they're going to be disturbing within that open space area. I don't think anybody's going to do that because everybody's going to be, want to be closer to the water. But still, it wouldn't hurt to adjust the building envelopes to provide at least a 10-foot buffer.
I don't know why I always thought it had to be the front yard setback at that point, even from the buffer.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I just kind of had always assumed that when I've laid out things in the past, I would, we would need to get clarification from someone on that.
Because the open space versus just going directly to the road?
Yeah, I mean, I definitely think a buffer is important. And the question is whether they're required in AA zone, right?
Yes.
The 50, additional 50 feet. Or whether a, a, a smaller amount, because they're already providing so much, is permissible.
And those open space parcels are easements on the lot. So the lot does technically go all the way to the road right-of-way.
So I guess that's a question for the building department.
If you look on the town GIS and shows a little bit on the map, on the north end of the property, it says there's a 12-foot wide right-of-way easement. And rocky point terrace goes into what's lot one. But then on the GIS, it appears that that right-of-way goes out to Nostrum Parkway. So I'm just curious, and maybe that's another building department question, whether or not that lot one becomes a corner lot in the adjustment.
I think in past circumstances, as long as they don't have, they don't egress onto the right-of-way, then it remains their side yard. That would be a condition that we might want to consider placing on it, that they could not access that. But I will confirm that with the building department again.
There were no fire systems or wells along this portion of roadway. The subdivision will have to be referred to the fire commissioners, their take. As I mentioned before, the wetlands were determined by N consultants. The subdivision will require a, a wetland permit from New York State D E C.
That's not before sketch plan, that can happen after sketch plan?
No, it can happen after sketch plan.
But before secret?
Well, secret would take place for preliminary. So we can certainly require that the wetland, that the D E C permit is obtained before that. It's unlikely that the health department would act on the.
They'd take a while.
And, and they also want to see.
Secret first, yeah.
Got it.
But because this is, this is, it being a major subdivision, it's considered a type one action in Shelter Island. So we'll have to have coordinated review and the health department and D E C.
And county.
The county planning commission.
Yeah.
They're, they don't have an approval, but they're involved.
They're a chicken. Was it a pig? Yeah.
Okay, but just getting into, you know, what a major subdivision, major subdivision has three parts. We're, we're at the sketch plan stage, okay? Now, basically, it's kind of like a, hi, how are you? This is what we would like to do if the board is, if the board agrees that, that this is something that they'd be interested in. And then next step is to go and file a preliminary application. There's a little bit more information. This one is, is, is pretty good. They've already included most of the information that's needed on a preliminary. But they'll make some adjustments, look at the memo, make some changes, change the building envelopes and come up with a preliminary application. There's an application, an application fee, and at that time, we do secret. And we'll start doing coordinated review once we consider the application complete. And then we go through that whole secret process. There's a, there's a public hearing associated with the preliminary. Sometimes there's a public hearing associated with the final, but more often, if there's no major changes to the subdivision map, it's usually waived. This, just to let everyone know, it's a three-step process. Most of what we do, most of the minor subdivisions, it's just two steps.
Yeah, two step, yeah.
Thank you. Anyway, a lot of the, the items from this point on have to do with E A F. The E A F will have to be revised. There is some, some additional information that's needed on the E A F. And one of the questions, when you, you look at a subdivision and the question in the E A F has to do with the amount of disturbance on the site. The C A F says none, because there are no roads being built or anything like that. However, going to have to relocate a driveway, relocate utilities. So there is some amount of disturbance taking place. The other thing is, you're really not just looking at what's happening there. You're looking at the totality of what happens when all of these lots get developed. Will there be more than an acre of land disturbed? Most likely. If that's being, that being the case, we're probably going to need a SWIP. And it's, it's good to have one that's on file. So this way, we don't have, you know, they don't need individual SWIPS when they come in and someone comes in to build on one of the lots.
No, it makes very, very good sense. I'd question that myself, whether a strip was needed.
I, I don't see how that. Yeah, you know, how are you going to avoid disturbing at least an acre on the overall site? But anyway, I think, you know, that's about it.
Just the last point about the water on this, water consumption.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, I mean, yeah, that was, sometimes you, you can look at the, an E A F and, and, and a project and you can say, well, we're just drawing lines on a piece of paper. So we're not really causing, we're not using any more water, we're not, but that's, in reality, that's not what happened.
It's the developments.
You know, you're, you're using water, you know, you're creating a greater demand for water. You're, you're creating additional sanitary flow on the lots. And that's all part of the, the process. Those are kinds of things that have to be looked at on the E A F and, and adjusted, so.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Please say your name for the record.
Good evening, this is Chairman, members of the board, Carl Benencasa, 860 Montar highway, Waterman, New York for the applicant. I want to thank Joe for the thorough review of the application. We received it today, I'm sure, I'll have to consult with the team, but I'm sure his suggestions, requirements can easily be accommodated. The map updated in line with the, Joe's right, when you do a secret, you want to talk about the ultimate development, take a hard look at the entire process. The secret, the draft E A F was submitted in contemplation of what is being done here. We can certainly be updated for what will ultimately be full development. That's not a problem. The setback from the, from the open space, I'm sure we can accommodate that. To the chairman's point, we'll, I guess we'll defer to the building inspector.
Let's get an interpretation from him.
Yeah. My reading is that, you know, since, as Joe mentioned, we're not actually deeding any property, the property line is still on the road, the setback would be 50 from that, which is covered by this easement, but again, I guess we'll defer to that. In all, I, I thought the, the analysis was thorough and could easily be accommodated. Of course, subject to further discussions internally. But based on his conclusion, I would, I would ask the board to approve the sketch plan and we can go to the private plat, the updates.
Anyone have any questions for Carl? The fact that they're all one and a half times the code minimum.
Yeah, yeah.
They're all large lots.
So even that, Char is impacted.
The buffers against the road.
Yeah.
And the minimal driveways, minimal breaks in the property.
One other thing that I just, I didn't mention, I really couldn't because it's important. This represents a reduction in density.
Yes.
It's very easy, you could very easily get seven lots. So by that regard, you know, the, the impacts have been reduced.
There's a bit of a change from a three-lot subdivision we presented with originally. I get it. I don't really, I'm not really struggling with this.
Not as far as going to the next stage, that's for sure.
I like the, that the open spaces along the road, because that's, that's just such an amazing walkway when the trees come in, you know, or even wider, like a hundred foot, you know, where we're just.
Well, that's what we're going to see what the building department comes back with. And then we can condition it.
Yeah, I think if we, to Joe's point, as far as the minimum, I think if we increase that buffer six inches, definitely.
Yeah, yeah.
For the total, and you can, you can probably just increase it on lot five, which is your biggest lot anyway, and just that one angle, that one line a little bit, and you'd pick it up in the heart, so maybe easier to then.
Or if you are going to look for the common driveway, maybe make one of those breaks in the easement a little smaller, because you have a common driveway. But there's a thousand ways to get it accommodated.
I think I'm happy to keep the 20 feet on each property as access in case there's some problems down the road.
I think it's see all stuff and fire stuff and.
There's no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. So are you guys comfortable with the next step, with the next month going to, you think, sketch plan approval?
Yeah. We can get it done in the month, sure. And then that, if we do, we get a sketch plan, then we do a public hearing after that, is that the way it works?
They have to submit the preliminary application, they have to submit the poll.
Got it.
I think in essence, as I say, we are comfortable with this. Hopefully, we'll have some feedback from building department by then.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Joe.
Good work.
Yeah.
Thanks for helping out.
And going on to other business. Jessica put together the planning board meeting dates for next year. We don't, we need to officially approve this until next month, so it can be advertised in time for January, but why not being ahead of the game?
Are those, I didn't, are those printed out? Didn't see it.
They were emailed around, but.
Should've been the bottom of the pile that you have.
Take the last page.
Last page.
You could queue, I know we talked about it, I looked at it quickly, but I think I already have it in my calendar.
I went through it, I didn't see any conflicting holidays. It's really false, this is one of the first years, it seems like it falls everything on the, except for November, falls on the second of the month. Maybe, hopefully, the town board won't be adjusting their schedule to conflict with us, but if that happens, we will, we will do what we need to do.
Yeah, that's already have.
Does that work for everyone?
July.
Okay.
Uh, so I guess I make a motion to accept the planning board minutes, meeting dates for 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Association of towns, we can send two members. It happens between February 16th and 19th in New York City. Julia would like to go. Matt and Marcus cannot. David, have you given any thought?
What's the date again, I'm sorry.
February 16th through 19th.
Yeah, I, in all honesty, it depends on what my spouse is doing.
She's been for the last couple of years.
She oftentimes goes, we go because we can share a room, so it actually makes it economical for things. So if she goes, I would probably be willing, be interested in going. If she's not going, then I'm not interested in going.
I'm interested in going too, but I won't, I'm just too far out for me to understand my schedule.
That's kind of, yeah, we're in the middle of tax season, so it's.
We missed the early deadline, which was November 1st. So we're full fare. So we're full fair, and so it shouldn't make a difference. I'll just tell Judy that Julia's going.
Yeah.
And then we may add one person or some combination to the later date.
That seems reasonable. What was the date again? I'm sorry, I didn't.
February 16th through 19th.
19th, that's right.
So Sunday or?
AOT.
Or Monday, Tuesday.
I have a feeling I'm going, because I see it on Liz's calendar.
17 is President's Day.
Yeah.
Yeah, school's closed for that week.
Just want to point out to you guys, Coco sent us an email about the 2024 annual training requirements. And we have until December 6th, the submit.
Yeah, I did it, yeah, I guess.
It's ours.
Wetlands application, permit applications, do you need me to start any discussion? Do you need to move the room or?
We already did that, yeah.
Okay. So wetland permit reviews for the town board. We have two in front of us and three that are new. Talking about the three, first, Camella and Ferrera, 13 Dickerson Drive. Who wants to sign up for that?
I'll do it.
Number two.
I'll do it, yeah, it'll be fine.
Geyer, 167 Ram Island Drive.
I'll do it.
Do you want to do that with it? Because it's right next door.
Next door, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'll do it with them.
Too far.
Mark, seven Larry Lane, I, I don't mind stepping in.
I can do that.
Okay. Okay, so the two ones we've prepared memos for are Han at 70 Tuttle Drive and Lumley at Eight Markets Drive. So Han first. Julia and Marcus, you looked at that? You wrote the, the greater part, the memo?
And I.
David.
David, did you do the skin?
Yeah.
I'm giving Marcus work. Yeah, that's my thought. I tried to get Marcus to help, he just wasn't willing.
You want to just briefly describe it, or what you thought, or? Everyone's seen the memo, but you want me to just go through the memo quickly?
I think that's just the biggest thing I saw that was the digging of the basement.
Yeah.
There was no existing basement, and so close to the water table. But we include, we, we.
So this is. So fully new house, new house on Tuttle Drive, on a very small lot. And they're using the same footprint. It currently is a ranch with maybe half of it being two stories. Now it's going to be all two stories with a roof deck.
Yep.
They're updating the cesspool to a IA sanitary system with a shallow pressurized drain field. They're putting in stormwater drywells where they don't exist now. Obviously new energy efficiencies. They have a letter DCLNJ, letter of no jurisdiction, based on the bulkhead, but you guys visited and said the bulkhead was not so significant.
Right.
So there are concerns that water on the relatively low light, stormwater could reach the house.
Yes.
Obviously, the, the basement can be weatherproof to resist some of that. The first floor is at elevation 12, which should be sufficient. But they are fairly rigid, meaning just the minimum of two feet above the water table.
Yeah.
Although the water table fluctuates.
That's, that was our concern.
Guess one thing we recommend is a little more separation. And I know it's out of our jurisdiction, but consideration of the height of the structure in the neighborhood. Recommending a five gallon per minute well, because of the water problems in the neighborhood. Oh, and then, and then the waterside stairs.
Yes.
They have existing stairs that are X square feet, and they're proposing new stairs that are 200 and some odd square feet.
210 or plus.
210. If they want to use their 100 square foot exemption, that would be fine. But they have to demonstrate, A, that it hasn't been used before, but I don't think it has. And B, that with the size of the existence stairs are, and that isn't what they can. So I'll release this memo tomorrow, if everyone's good.
Yes.
Next one is Lumley at Eight Markets Drive.
David.
Mostly Matt. I was, I was a little.
Mostly everybody, because once I sent it out.
That was part of the plan. As everyone else.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're renovating the home, staying within the, the footprint on the first floor. They're going over, outside is a footprint by what, 52 square feet it was? On the second floor.
But they're reducing X and adding Y, which is a net reduction in square feet, right?
Yes.
So making this, in the vegetable buffer.
The home is, the home is so close to the water to begin with, there's a bunch of all that. But they're replacing the septic system and removing the bachi court, which in Klakka was never used. So it was pretty straightforward with all the things that we need to, you know, the, the requirements with the still fencing and things when they do the, the construction, a 10 to 15 foot non-turf buffer. But.
And they gave specific material and scientific names and density. I know the, the environmental memo was asking for it. I really saw it in the application.
Yep.
I think it was maybe just boilerplate that's being added into those memos.
They, this is a 77? Putting it in a 77?
I, I don't know this, I didn't look specifically at the size. It's for six bedrooms, or five, actually. Five in the house and one in the garage. It's a two story garage, and they're converting the second floor to essentially sleeping quarters. They are providing, as I mentioned, the, the buffer and describing it. I think the property is relatively flat, so the 10 foot buffer should suffice.
They have drywells on it, so.
I think the major concern is just like, just disturbance that's been during construction is probably the primary concern in all honesty.
They have, they're putting in sil.
And they're doing sil, that's, that's the only thing that was concerned.
They're rebuilding the deck and the vegetable buffer. I know on past applications, we struggled with that. But I, I think it's reasonable to, to permit a reconstruction of a deck. So if everyone's okay with that, I'll send the memo in.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's fine.
Yeah, that's all I have. Anyone in the audience have anything? Anyone on Zoom have anything for us? That's the case, I make the motion to adjourn the November 12th planning board meeting, and we are going to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiation.